My congratulations to the Senate, of the United States of America, and to their Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming for what I hope is a pretty informative meeting on something that we're all pretty interested in. We're all here, all in. Somebody hear children talking?
Any participants of the Zoom meeting, you should make sure your microphone is muted.
Can't you mute everything?
Yeah. I just want to show them. But it doesn't stop them from unmuting themselves. So they can continue to unmute themselves.
That's disturbing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meetings June 3, June 10, and June 24. So move.
Second.
Discussion? This is when we don't have a microphone, we're all spread out. My gym voice is going to really come in handy. All in favor? Motion passes five zero. As you can see, Roman numeral two C, we have personnel. I'll entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Kristen Kaiser as Winthrop High School art teacher. So move.
Second.
Discussion, anybody want to introduce her? Is she here?
I don't think she is, but you can tell with the mask on.
It would be awful to come here and not introduce.
Well, you can't tell with the mask on, so no, I don't think she's here. Mark, she's not here, right?
I don't think she's here.
I told him she did not have to be here, that she could be.
Mark, any comments or?
So Kristen comes to us from working in the public sector, has a lot of experience with multimedia presentation. Her background is in arts, very strong candidate, and is very excited to be joining our staff.
All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Mr. Superintendent, your report, please.
Okay, I don't really have a financial report for you tonight. I put the, we're in the process now. Amanda is in process of putting the budget that just was passed last night, which I'll talk about in a second, into proper form. And we'll have regular information updates the first meeting of every month. Speaking of that, I did want to congratulate all of you. I sent you an email today. Congratulations on getting the budget passed.
Yay!
A lot of hard work on your part, and those great people said, oh geez, congratulations, Jim. And I said, well, you know, thanks. I really didn't have anything to do with this one. I guess it falls in the category of sometimes I'll get beat up with things I didn't really do, so I'll seek credit for things I don't really do. So I think it is a real positive reflection on both the support in this community and the hard work of the school committee to get information out there and get that budget passed. The meeting calendar is in the, in your packet. Hopefully, you've seen it, Jenny and I went through it before. We made a couple of adjustments. Our next meeting would be August 12th. And I don't know if you, you don't approve that? It's not a vote that you have to take?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's fine. So that's in there, if anybody has any questions. So I have just a series of quick hitters here. I do want to pass this around to get you to sign. This is that commitment to equity letter that essentially Kristen started and then Sue edited and then sent it to me, and I added it in there. And I sent it out to all of you, and I got feedback from most of you. So what we'd like to do next is have you all sign it, and then we'll submit it to the community advertiser for them to put it in there and then also to post it on our website. Would you like me to read it, Elbow?
Yes, please.
Titled Commitment to Equity. It says, "The Winthrop School Committee Superintendent Jomajcikin would like to reaffirm our commitment to build a school culture of acceptance and understanding while embracing our diversity. Our goal has always been and continues to be to provide our students with an environment that promotes learning and growth. We strive for a school culture that does not tolerate discrimination in any form. It is our desire to encourage students to appreciate and be thankful for the differences that make us all individuals and to stay away from judgments of people that are not the same as us. In this case, we specifically mean race, but it goes beyond that. We strive for a school culture that allows for difficult and meaningful conversations to be had without excluding or isolating any student. We strive for a school culture that honors the dignity of each person. We invite you to join us in building this community of respect, respectfully to the Winthrop School Committee, and my name is also on there as well." So I'll pass it down to Kristen, and you can just pass it around. Had a number, met a number of people in my first couple of weeks here on the job, officially on the job. And met today with Burt Security, because they're doing the work for the schools and following this stream of emails between the building administrators and the gentleman from Burt's, his name is Jeff Truman. And so I asked him, we met today, and he said, so I have, I think I know what's going on, but what did you tell me? And so he did. I also had him do a, give us a quote for this building. Jeff.
Cobra.
Cobra, Cobra. And I had met and talked about the possibility of doing the same thing, a swipe card system here in the town. So we're going to get that quote, and then we'll be talking about that later. Had a couple of meetings with John Devinsky, who's with the EMS. To, we ordered some, a bunch of PVE stuff from him, face masks, hand sanitizer, wipes. We need to talk to about, we're getting some.
Plexiglass?
Plexiglass shields for, for, not for everybody, but for wherever locations we think we need them. Anything else we need, we're doing that, and that'll be purchased out of the CARES Act funds. We had our retreat, obviously, you guys know that. For the public to know that we had our school committee retreat. For me, it was a great, one of my first days on the job. And so.
Folks on Zoom, would you please mute your mics? Thank you.
And so it was great. So we had, we reviewed goals. For me, goals for the Winthrop Public Schools, and it just was a good time. We had that facilitated, and I felt very positive at the end of the day with that retreat. I spent one meeting in face, face-to-face, another one, not face-to-face, with Sierra, with Mike, whoever Mike, oh, he's hiding back there. Trying to get up to speed and have that transition from what they did for us last year. I know the administrators have been working hard and whipping Mike and working really hard to get stuff that needed to be done to wrap up last year and roll stuff over to this year, and so that transition is happening. And they've been very, we're going to work out a contract, an agreement with them, so that they will continue to assist us, particularly Mike, during the course of the transition from Sierra to our own people. Met with Josh Farr. They had a conversation about adult ed and where things stand there. And so that was great, sort of bring me up to speed with that. And I have met a couple of times with superintendents from the Kennebec Valley Superintendent Group Association via Zoom. We have another meeting tomorrow, and we're going to talk more about this later as it applies, so I'm not going to, it's been much time here, but it's been great for me to catch up with a lot of my colleagues. Things have changed a great deal in the two years that I was out of being a superintendent, but still a lot of familiar faces, so that's great. And the last thing that I'm not sure where, where, it should have been on here, but one of the things we talked about at the retreat was the position of Director of Teaching and Learning. And I asked for information at some point here to talk about the budget. You'd asked for some numbers, and I have that information. Do you want to do that under this presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I would like to, we had some positions that were really contingent upon the budget passing. Grade one, you know what, I have a list, so please stop guessing. You can go to my notes. Actually, I want to pass it out to all of you. So I've done, been in touch with main school management and talked to a couple of other people about the question, specific question from the retreat was about when the last curtailment was, because we are anticipating, one of the reasons we're really grateful to have the citizens of Winthrop pass the budget on the first try without any modifications is we are feeling very confident that there'll be a curtailment during the course of this year, and we'll have to find some cuts. So Dr. Brown was aware of that and did some work in advance. And there were some positions that were not advertised yet, we're waiting to see the budget pass and then get some sense of what the curtailment might look like. So there's, we're not getting any, any specific direction from the Department of Education, but we took a look at what the last curtailment was. The last curtailment was in 2008, 2009. And that ended up being about, well, what was told by Steve Bailey was that about, was about an eight percent reduction from state subsidy. Nobody anticipates, well, it varies. Everywhere from no curtailment at all, which seems crazy for us not to plan for that, to significantly less than that. When I actually looked up and, when Steve Bailey had the director from main school management, executive director, said to me is, go back and take a look at your, the actual payment from 2008, 2009. And what I saw that then was, well, what he thought initially was that the way they did that curtailment was they didn't make the last payments to the schools in June. So instead of giving subsidy in June, we had no subsidy. And that's, and he basically said that was about a 12, that's where he came up with the eight percent figure. When I went back and looked at it, so if you looked at that, that would have been about a $238,000 cut. And our portion of this, that the state contributed back only 12 years ago was not significantly less than it is now. We still, in our game, significantly more money. I guess that's the best way to say it. But when I looked at it, the curtailment actually, they started taking money out in February, and they took out about $18,000 a month, and it totaled $91,944 back in the curtailment 2008, 2009. My best guess, and at this point, it's simply that, it's a guess, we don't know, is that we would anticipate something more than that. So it was ninety, say 92,000 back then. And the list I have given you here, I'm sorry, it's not, it didn't make enough for the public, is that there are a number, a couple of positions that are either not being filled or are postponed, and some things that were paid in advance. So if you add all those things up, and they include, there's a bookkeeper that's in a position we're not intending to fill, not that we don't need it, but an anticipation of the curtailment, we're not filling it. And some of you might look at that and say, that figure, I would expect that figure to be higher. And you may remember that part of having a full-time bookkeeper is that a part-time accountable person would not, would not continue. Well, if we don't do the full-time bookkeeper, we do still keep the part-time. So that's the difference. I worked with Amanda today, and we got those, worked on these numbers. Winthrop Fuel was paid $15,000 in advance. Drummond Woodson, our attorneys for the school, were paid a $25,000 retainer in advance out of the 1920 funds. And the school nutrition program was $20,000, went to that to sort of get that where it needed to be going into this year. So in addition to that, the part-time Latin position, it was, last year it was 50/50. They were replaced, we're not hiring the Latin part, but we are replacing the social studies person with a 60% position. So this represents 40% of that position. So I think these are pretty conservative numbers. The reality is, they probably might be a little hot. We might actually realize more savings than that. So those savings altogether represent $127,000 that would go towards our curtailment at this point. So I guess I would say, what you see above that is, if you look at, this year, the state contribution to Winthrop Public Schools is $4,990,230.13, and 1% of that is $49,902. So basically, what the $127,000 represents is approximately 2.5% that we've already have earmarked towards a potential, a potential curtailment. So if in 2008, 2009, the curtailment was just under 92,000, it seems reasonable that we'd expect this year it's going to be somewhere a little bit north of that. So $127,000 feels like a good, a good place to start in order to make sure we are able to meet the curtailment if it happens. And again, I can't emphasize this enough, particularly for the citizens who happen to watch this. If we had not passed the budget on the first try, and we had to cut the budget that was passed by any amount of dollars, you would add those dollars on to these dollars that we have to save, and you'd see that the impact would have been tremendous on the overall budget. So, so based upon this, as I mentioned at the retreat, I would love to see us move forward with the position that the school committee has worked hard for. And that's the, we only had it for one year last year, the Director of Teaching and Learning. And I'd like to see it's also fill the positions that were on hold, that includes a first grade teacher. And the way that Jeff and I have been working together, with, that's, right now it's advertised as anticipated openings, grade one, two, and three. And what we had talked about was, depending on how things went with the budget, that we might just hire two out of those three. But I'm recommending with the budget passed that we fill all three. And it's not just about money in this case. Later on, we're going to talk about the social distancing and the back-to-school. And the more staff we have, the more we're able to sort of spread them out and take advantage of spaces. So you can't do that if you don't have all the staff. So we really need all the staff that we could possibly get. So I would recommend that we hire that first grade teacher. We posted today some of the six through 12 gifted and talented, which was again on hold. And I already mentioned, we've posted for the social studies part-time 60%, 60%, right Mark?
Correct.
60%. And now I'd like to move forward with the Director of Teaching and Learning.
One of my big concerns about moving forward with that Director of Teaching and Learning is it seems as though you've figured out a way to pay the salary and benefits for that position this year. But next year, I want to be able to have him onboard as well. Next year is going to be, could be more difficult even than this year.
I don't know that there's any way to know that, but I know this, and I've said this at the retreat, and I'll say it publicly, I think you guys worked hard. I think it's an essential position for us to have if we look at returning our, our performance to a level that Winthrop Schools have enjoyed for a lot of years, haven't enjoyed recently. I think this is a critical position to do that. It was in place this year, the person didn't finish the school year. And if you, my sense is, if we don't fund it now, you'll, we'll never get it. And I think that will put, that will, you know, I think unless you, unless you do the job, you don't, you probably don't understand, I don't mean you personally, you don't understand the value, that it's really important for somebody to be, to be the filter. I mean, the most important work that we do in the school is teaching and learning. And so to have somebody who's specifically responsible for overseeing, coordinating the pre-K-12 teaching and learning is, in my mind, is really, really essential and a critical step to returning us to overall better performance for our students.
Other thoughts, school board members?
I can, I can weigh in. I'll just, I'll say what I also had already reiterated to Mr. Hodgkin, or I'll reiterate what I already told Mr. Hodgkin, that this is an essential position. Obviously, teaching and learning is our job, and so to have someone directing that is extremely important. I, too, am very concerned about curtailment and what that will look like. I'm also very concerned about the amount of resources we're going to need to put into our schools above and beyond the budget that was passed yesterday to make our schools safe for the buildings to reopen. So I feel like that CARES Act funding that is coming from the state is going to be utilized in other ways. So if the Director of Teaching and Learning can be supported by our budget even with a curtailment, then it should be filled. But if we're going to be tapping into other funds, I think until we have a set plan for what it looks like for our buildings to be reopened safely, then those funds shouldn't be earmarked for anything else.
I can tell you at this point, there is no CARES Act funding. I sort of disagree like that that's okay, but I, but I think the people that, especially here, Jeff and I have had some conversations, I think the, the intent, at least initially, is not to spend any of the CARES Act funding on this position.
Great. Now, in the past, that position was four fifths. One fifth went to RSU two.
Same thing.
How was it?
And, and that wasn't exactly my understanding, but basically, the 20, 20,000 of that, of the dollars for that position comes from the Regional Service Center. That was earmarked for RSU two. When the person who was in the position was in RSU two, when that person came here, that money followed, and that money's still going to follow.
I thought he was supposed to actually offer services to RSU two.
Well, it was part of his, the expectation for, it wasn't just for RSU two, it was for the entire Regional Service Center.
So Miranda cooking on RSU two?
Correct.
A lot of money has been paid forward for this coming budget, for our, now our current budget. And again, we're not going to have that money that we'll be able to pay forward. I really don't want to hire somebody this year and then not be able to find the funding or have to let other personnel go in order to maintain the funding for Director of Teaching and Learning. I agree that teaching and learning, the priority should be up at the top. So maybe you would consider holding off on one of the other positions that have been held off to date.
So I want to just address that, because I think maybe it's a bit of a misnomer. The 15, the 50,000 for the bookkeeper is in the budget. The 15,000 for Winthrop Fuel is in the budget that just passed. All of these things, $127,000, are in the budget. So it's not an addition. If we, if there's a curtailment, next year we'll put the budget together. That will come up as a reduction in revenues. But on the, you know, that's on the, on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, these expenditures are not likely to increase. There, there will be money for a bookkeeper. It will, it will be something greater than this, because it will be the same, I anticipate, the same thing will happen. It'll be the elimination of the part-time accounts payable position in favor of a full-time bookkeeper. Winthrop Fuel, you know, that, the hope is that we, you know, theoretically speaking, you can say this now, there is no curtailment, and there are people who say that. I think there, I think that's crazy to hope for that. Hope is not a strategy. That you would know if no curtailment happens, that there's $127,000 that's in the budget that will not be expended, because it wasn't curtailed. So you, you should anticipate that that, you'd have that and more than that for a carryover. So in the best-case scenario, there's no curtailment. You have that, you have that carryover, and the impact on, on the 2021, 2022 budget is minimal. It won't be as a result of this. It won't be as a result of, the Director of Teaching and Technology in Learning is in the budget, and it will, you know, it will still be in the budget a year from now. Where it could potentially become an issue is, right now, it's funded essentially through three, three things. And so if one of those things doesn't continue to fund it, whether it's RSC or some of the title funds where we, we funded, then Title II, yep, thank you, Jeff, then, you know, then we'll have to think about, what do we do? Does that mean we cut back on the position, only offer it four days, or whatever? I hope that doesn't happen, but I guess I'm just, I hear the, I hear the concern, but I, you know, I, to me, the impact on the budget is overstated, and it won't, it won't be as, as much. It will be a, be a whole different issue, and that's why I'm saying, if we don't fill this position, and then next year you don't fill the position, and there's a curtailment, and this, this amount of money gets cut, and then you have to add that amount of money into next year's budget, now you've, now you've really built a huge hole.
Other school committee people weigh in? You don't want a motion for that, or what would you like a consensus?
Yeah, I guess I'd like a consensus, because there's, there's.
Okay. Kristen?
Yes.
Oh, she's, I should have said Ms. Chalmers, sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Duckett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Gary, yes?
Thank you. I think I can close my report. Don't expect me to shut up now.
That was a good report. School Committee Chair Report, again, with the, with the budget passing. Every, out of every three votes, two votes were for the budget. I have to thank our community, and I want to thank both of our superintendents, Friar and Perk, for bringing that home. It was, it's great to see that kind of support from the community. And I don't know how much of it was due to Janet and Jody, but we thank you.
Great deal, boys.
Yeah. And, you know, when I, as I went up and was waiting for the count last night, I was surprised to see Janet and Jody. And then I saw Joel, and he said, other Winthrop people had been up there because they needed folks to help, they needed volunteers. So I just want to thank all of our people for helping out with that vote yesterday. It was pretty impressive. Congrats to Joe, I think he came, I think, I haven't seen the actual numbers, but what I hear is that things are going well for your, for you moving on with the, with the state election.
The best way to run is when you don't have a opponent.
And then MSMA Fall Conference, folks, where's my stuff? Please put in, put on your calendar, the conferences, October 30th and 31st, it's a Friday and a Saturday. However, right now, there's a call from the MSBA, the Board, School, the State School Board, for resolutions. And I've asked Mr. Petrowski, who just loves this stuff, to give us just a little bit of a primer on the resolutions and see if there are any resolutions that you want to be written up and sent in for the consideration of the MSBA, which will then go on, but that's Mr. Petrowski's chat.
One of the fun assignments in some respects that I've had for the last few years is attending the Main School Management Association's legislative gathering. And in that, they invite, and I guess the deadline is sometime here in August.
Middle of August, yeah.
All of the school districts, if they wish to submit a resolution, which essentially becomes the policy part of the Main State Management Association to use in advancing their pro-legislative agenda for the next year. They can really come from different ideas that you might have. I've heard of class size before, was a very important issue that they had put out there. I've also seen on a regular basis the call for a new taxation formula. Sometimes that new call comes from someone down in Stonington, or maybe it's on Cape Elizabeth, or maybe it's even in Carabasik Valley that the school committee says, we are being treated unfairly when it comes to raising money locally, because locally means raising money from the local property tax. And of course, the big major issue has been, why hasn't the state gone back to what we passed a number of times, at least a couple of times, that the state would contribute at least 55% of your educational budget? And of course, they're always proud when they can get another quarter and get up to 51 in a quarter. Next year, it starts out at 49 in the third, and you say, how did it get there? Something happened. But it is something that, you know, not only is the school board interested in this, but obviously, the town, the community can be interested in it, too. I don't think this really is the place for us to. I don't think this really is the place for us to submit a motion on whether or not we open school or not because we'll, we'll actually know that by the times we get around to going to this October meeting. But that's the essential thing. And we have gone in and we review all of the resolutions that pass muster from our committee as a school board. And our school committee, this is from now on, but we go, and usually, I support the school committee's saying and vote that way. Or maybe I'll speak opposite way and vote that way. But, but the resolutions do tend to change, and the interpretation tends to change over a couple of months. But it's an important activity. There's no question about it because we are setting school board policy. We are setting ourselves up as spokespeople for a particular thing that should be done.
Thank you. Anything come to anybody's mind right now? If, if as you're pondering, you come up with something, would you please get it to Joe? I hope it's okay to say that. The last time somebody got an idea to me that I tried to write up in resolution form, I never saw it again. So we'll see if Joe has better luck than I do. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Do you need one more thing?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So I forgot, I did write a thank you from the Winter Public Schools today. I wanted to share that as well. I don't think you all saw it, so do you want me to share it?
Thanks, Joe.
Okay. This will be in the appetizer this weekend, I hope.
Did you get it in?
Yes.
Wow.
I'm calling cold, twisting some arms. Thank you. And it says, "Thank you for Winter Public Schools. On behalf of Winter School Committees, I want to take this opportunity to say thank you for passing the 2020-21 School Budget. This is very impressive in light of the difficult situation brought on by COVID-19 and the impact on the economy. This is certainly a tough time to ask taxpayers to absorb an increase, but investing in our children is a great use of taxpayers' dollars. I can assure you that I will do my very best to manage the budget in a frugal and responsible manner. With the strong possibility of curtailment looming later this year, in this year, we are almost certainly going to have to make cuts. Your support of this budget, as presented, will make that process a little easier, although it will definitely hurt, still hurt. With the passage of this budget, we can focus our attention on trying to get our schools open so that our children can return. The key to any plan is the safety of our children. As a superintendent, it is nearly impossible for me to guarantee the safety of the students or staff. Therefore, we will probably err on the side of caution and follow the CDC guidelines. Again, your support of the budget allows us to place our focus where it has, where most needed, where it is most needed at this time. Thank you again for your support." James Sargeant of the Dentists.
Nicely done, thank you.
Thank you.
That's super. Standing Committee Reports, Finance.
I got a bunch of warrants. Soon I finished up the cycle for nineteen-twenty. And Colleen has a copy of all these, but we did payroll nineteen-twenty, twenty A, twenty B, twenty C, twenty D, twenty E, twenty-one, twenty-one A, twenty-two, twenty-two A, twenty-two B, twenty-two C, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four A, twenty-four B, twenty-four C, twenty-five and twenty-six. Accounts payable five, five B, nineteen A, nineteen B, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four A, twenty-five, twenty-six. And food service thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen A, seventeen and eighteen.
And you folks love it, don't you?
We did it over a couple of days, but, and thanks to everyone in central office that helped with that too, so.
Super, super. Thank you, folks. It's a lot of work. Policy Committee. We, as soon as the Policy Committee starts to function again, which will be in the not-too-distant future, we have to immediately take a look at Title IX. Title IX laws have passed, and they will become active the middle of August. So it's imperative that we start with that. That affects at least five of our policies. We have the draft policies from MSMA. They'll be put on the website for feedback, comments. And the Policy Committee will meet at five o'clock before the next meeting so that we can hopefully turn around, present them to the school committee because the MSMA obviously thinks it's quite important that we pass up-to-date policies so our administrators have up-to-date policies to, to have, to guide them through any difficult situations that, where they, they have to do it according to the law anyway. So our policies need to reflect the law that will come into effect in the middle of August. So we're gonna do that right off. Negotiations.
At the last meeting, we signed an agreement with the Administrator's Unit. So I'll just reiterate that that was done on June twenty-third, and we did not need to go to fact-finding. That agreement was signed and executed by myself and Joel Stoneton. It was signed, and then Ida executed that July first and turned all the data in, and we're good to go, so.
Excellent.
Congratulations to everyone.
That is super. That was a lot of hard work on a lot of people's parts also. Curriculum Committee? No, nothing to report at this time. Renovation, new construction and grade school maintenance, which is a new standing committee because we just cannot afford to let all of, all of what we need to do to move forward with our maintenance of our buildings, we cannot let that to fall behind because we have health crises affecting our country. So it's in there, and we hope that we can have some updates. We don't have any updates on that.
Well, I'm not specifically, and I don't, who's in, who's in charge of that?
You are.
Oh, I thought it was. Well, I figured that, Amanda was, so I can tell you what I've done thus far. I have called into the office at the Department of Education to look at, talk with the construction people. And I've also scheduled a visit from Tom Siemens, who works for Seekins. Tom Seekins, who works for Siemens. There we go. He's coming in the first week in August, and we're going to take the architectural study and go through the buildings. And primarily, we're gonna focus on the grammar, the grade school. I don't want to keep calling it grammar school. I'll get my terminology right here. The grade school, and then take a look at some of those issues. We'll talk a little bit about some of those issues when we get to the study. Maybe, maybe I'll put Jeff on the squad, and we'll talk about some of the things that have been addressing one of the questions you asked today.
Yeah.
So I, I always thought there was a board, a committee member who was in charge. I assumed I had a.
Well, we don't have a committee there. All we did was, we created, we created a committee on paper, but we haven't done anything else with it.
So I will say publicly, for those of you who are here, I think this one issue around the state of the buildings, particularly the grade school here, is the greatest challenge we have facing us in the foreseeable future. And I, as I see it right now, I don't have a great answer. We're gonna have to work together to figure it out. It's gonna be a challenge.
And that's, that's regardless of whether we have all of these other challenges.
Exactly, exactly.
Yep. Thank you. See, I knew you knew stuff about that. Administrative comment. Ms. Fawcett and Mr. Delisle, I know that this is new. We just asked for an update on anything you want to brag about, your students or building, or what you're doing. If you're not ready for that, that's fine, and just say pass because I don't want to embarrass anybody. But Mr. Ladd will show us how it's done, please.
I, I really don't have anything.
Okay.
Been working hard on COVID planning, but nothing tangible yet.
It sort of consumes all of your brain out of twenty-four seven, doesn't it?
It does.
Yeah, I would find that true also. Ms. Chris?
I pass.
Okay.
Same thing as Joe.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I met with a group of teachers at the high school the week after school got out. Actually, it was the second week after school got out. We took on the task of creating the master schedule for the 2021 school year. We did that all manually, and I believe we have a good plan ready to go as soon as Power School is up and running. All the student schedules are on paper on my desk, ready to be entered, just as, waiting to be handed out. I met with three families today whose students did not find it to be a good situation doing online learning this past spring. They're going into their senior year. We come up with plans with the three families to get some of their core classes that they didn't finish, finished up so that when they go into their senior year, it'll cut down on their workload. So that's what we've been doing at the high school.
That's good, thank you. Ms. Fawcett?
I'll take my mask off just for a second so that you can actually see my face for a minute. So fifteen days on the job, really just getting acclimated to the office, the staff, the, everything that's going on. I never, Lori Love, you're the previous director, today, and we've been looking at billing and getting things entered in, so I'm up to date on that. Been connecting with the Capital Area Regional Directors Group by email. We are meeting in the beginning of August. This is very similar to the format that I've had in the mid-coast. And so just starting to meet people, talk with families, just getting at it at this point.
Thank you. Great, that was your first one. That is super.
I practiced this week.
You did, you're a real good job.
Good job.
And Mr. Delisle?
Over here, Heidi.
Yeah.
Spent a lot of time trying to get, acclimated to the environment and all the different systems, and trying to gain access to stuff, and been on the struggle bus with Power School and Synergy and Mark's. Mark's waiting on me to figure out how all that stuff works, and, you know, necessarily.
I saw him look at you when he was giving you this report.
I looked over at him, he kind of stickered, and it was a, I guess I'm wrong, you know? Since we don't really have anybody who's got a great deal of experience with that process and who has ever done it internally any longer, so. That's where it is.
We're getting there.
Quite the learning curve, right?
You got it.
Yeah. Thank you. I think, did you want to introduce the presentation, one of you? We have a, a presentation that everybody's been waiting for, and I'll let Ms. Bell just take it away.
Okay. So this, the Back to School Steering Committee has been meeting every week. And we have results of the staff survey and the family survey that we sent out. I'm hoping, if anybody wants to hear about the staff survey, that Jeff would be really gracious and answer those questions. And I will handle the family survey. So we asked ten questions, and the, the first one was whether or not you were planning on sending your child back to school in the building. And we had sixty-nine, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine people say that they were. No, that's not them. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's the grade school. And then sixty-four, one-hundred-and-forty in the middle school, and one-hundred-and-fifty-six in the high school, for a total of five-hundred-and-sixty-five that are planning to send their kids back. Those who are planning to, to keep their kids home and do remote learning are sixty-four in the grade school, thirty-one in the middle school, and forty-one in the high school, for a total of one-hundred-and-thirty-six. And then those who are planning to just do their own thing with homeschooling, separate from the school, is nine in the grade school, eight in the middle school, and eleven in the high school, for a total of twenty-eight. Those who are going to need transportation, bus transportation, one-ninety-five in the grade school, eighty-one in the middle school, and forty-two in the high school, for a total of three-hundred-and-eighteen. Those who have adequate internet service for at home are two-hundred-and-ninety-eight, and those who need assistance are eleven. Those participating from home that will not have access to meals at school and will need food assistance is twenty-two. Then we asked questions. To implement six-foot physical distancing recommendations in our classrooms may require limiting in-person student attendance to two or three days per week. Given this constant constraint, please indicate which condition you are most comfortable with. We had nineteen percent at three-foot physical distancing, six-foot at twenty-seven percent, twenty-seven percent at six-foot distancing, and fifty-four percent encouraged keep touch hands to yourself. Should students be required to wear face covering when they are at school? Please select the descriptor you are most comfortable with at this time. We had four percent who elected grades two through twelve at all times, thirteen percent all students at all times, ten percent for public areas when physical distancing is difficult, seventeen percent in the class and public when physical distancing is difficult, seventeen percent directed by staff or individual, and then thirty-nine percent for students slash parent choice. Creating similar groups of students who will remain together during the day, cohorts, is a suggested strategy to consider. This could involve having the same group of students spend their day together for classes, meals, recesses, et cetera. And nine percent voted, elected the balanced risk and reward. Twenty percent was, they thought this was a critical strategy. Thirty-eight, thirty-three percent asked for typical groupings, and thirty-eight percent felt it was valuable. How important is it for all students to have the opportunity to return to school full-time in person when school opens in September? Three percent said not very important. Eight percent said should not return. Fourteen percent felt it was important. Twelve percent felt it was somewhat important, and sixty-three percent felt it was extremely important. I'd like to say Jeff's lab for compiling all this information was a lot of work. Other than that, we've been working on drafting a guide, a draft of guiding principles that I will present at the next meeting. To date, the following points are included in the draft. At the center of all decisions is the safety of students and staff. Therefore, the health and safety recommendations slash guidelines from the CDC, Maine Department of Education, and the state of Maine will serve as the foundation for the Winter Public School reopening plan. All Winter Public School staff will return to their building for school. All teacher instruction and learning activities will take place from school, utilizing appropriate strategies and platforms regardless of the number or the location of the students. Staff who feel they may not be able to perform their job responsibilities may request leave or reasonable accommodations under the appropriate state and federal laws and school policy. Employees will be responsible to submit appropriate documentation along with any requests for leave and/or accommodation. All students are encouraged to return to school in person and full-time when school reopens. Students who do not attend school in person or full-time will participate in remote learning through the school they are enrolled in and following established school schedule. Student and staff environments will be reviewed and reorganized when possible to enhance physical distancing. Requirements of six feet for all occupants. All staff and students will wear face covering while at school, including the boss, unless physical distancing requirements of six feet are clearly met and a staff member indicates that it is safe to remove a face cover. Face coverings will be required in all public areas of school, including entrances, hallways and bathrooms. We're still looking at some issues, including busing, and how that's all gonna come out, scheduling, and we have not addressed adult education at all either. We're looking to begin subcommittees. Some of the areas we're looking at are technology, custodial, food service, teaching, health, transportation, and special education. And Superintendent Hodgkin learned at the Kennebec Valley Superintendent's Association, there was a proposition to consider delaying the first day of school for students for up to ten days to adequately address scheduling, readjusting furniture, all of the things that are, need to take place in order for school to open. It's. It's Superintendent Hodgkin's recommendation to delay Winthrop students by ten days so that the staff can adequately get that done. And it's my recommendation to report back to the school committee in two weeks, even though there's not a scheduled school committee right now, meeting right now.
So is it your recommendation that we consider, uh, a school committee meeting in two weeks?
Yes, yes.
Twenty-nine?
Yes, on the twenty-ninth.
I think it's the twenty-ninth. What the, uh, how are your folks' calendars looking for the twenty-ninth? Yep, it's the twenty-ninth. Don't look at me that way, trust me.
That's when I could take vacation.
This summer, I'm not sure.
I'm open.
Ms. Deick?
I'm fine.
Ms. Shumway?
I'm open.
Ms. Bell? And, Ms. Important, Superintendent? Okay. Do you want to move the, um, policy committee to, um, five o'clock before that meeting?
That would be a good idea.
Okay, did you get that, Sue?
Pauline, you getting that all done? Hand it back. Gentleman, hand it back.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and you gonna be, uh, asking for any, uh, input from the public?
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the school committee if they have any questions for the committee members here, and then after they grill Sue, um, I'm gonna ask for any, any people out there to ask questions.
Thanks.
Okay? You're welcome. Any school committee questions? I, I have one on your, on the, um, on the survey. So it looks like from the survey, if everybody sticks to the guns here, there'll be five-hundred-and-sixty-five students in our three buildings.
Yes.
Um, that's out of a total of about eight-hundred-and-fifty students now.
Correct.
So that's about, uh, what are we, what are we losing, about thirty percent somewhere?
So we calculate the correct.
In the rough numbers. So, so we're calculating then as far as the six-foot space in classrooms, we're calculating that will have only, to begin with, only seventy, uh, seventy percent of our students in our buildings. And that comes into the calculation when we start talking about spacing and transportation as well.
Yeah, and we have a lot to discuss from the respective transportation.
Right.
We think, and, and certainly Karen and Jeff are here, Mark's here, could talk about the, the buildings. The, the general feeling among the, the committee is that if we have thirty percent of our, um, population not in attendance, doing it remotely, that we should be able to, uh, provide adequate spacing within, within the building.
Okay. Other questions, Mr. Petrowski?
Uh, it's, it's obvious from the, uh, reading, the actual written responses to the survey that you will have a lot of people not coming to school for some very good reasons. And I don't know, uh, if the superintendent, if the topic came up when you were meeting with your other superintendents, but I, as I suggested in a memo.
Can you hold off for a second? I can't even hear you. Uh, will everybody on Zoom please mute your mics? Everybody on Zoom please mute your mics? They haven't been good. Hey, Mr. Steve!
Morning.
Thank you so much, Mr. Delisle. Okay, Mr. Petrowski, you sort of have to.
I'm gonna keep them out. Just the, the, no halls, no sports, etc. So that up there is mostly basketball and football.
Goodbye, Mr. Steve.
Get kicked out. Morning.
Okay. And field hockey, and those basketball are.
He refuses to leave.
Is he on? Is he in the show down there?
Usually is. He is for the town.
Probably as a school needs a official account, because then I can, I could be a co-host and I could sit over there and hit mute and have him do.
Yeah. I think he's holding a meeting. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Petrowski.
Well, my, my point was is that, I don't know whether you discussed it or not, but it becomes more and more apparent to me that one of the problems is you've got a faculty and now we know, or now we think we're going to have classes are going to be open, and they, I don't see how they can be the same people teaching remotely. In, in other words, if you have a class, Jimmy, and, and you're supposed to also teach remotely to some that aren't there, I don't know how in your day you can do it. I think you have to go to this separate thing, which I mentioned, and said, can we share with other people and find enough faculty to teach remotely? But it would be a combination of schools, uh, where the children, it's kind of like going on the first day of school, you meet all these new people type of thing.
That was, that was a, a, a great topic of conversation in the committee, and I think the feeling is that we, and that's part of why I'm recommending that we have more additional time just to, to open the school, because we need to take a look at, um, I, I think what you're suggesting is not what we want to do. We want students to follow the schedules that they have, and it'll be a little tricky. You know, we talked the elementary school, high school be easy, easiest, uh, middle school be a little harder, and then elementary school be a little more challenging to say, you're following your schedule, and so the, the students are expected to, to remote, they're not doing, they're not being educated, um, separately. They're being educated as part of the class, and so they'll be expected to be a part of the, um, the whole learning environment, uh, and do it remotely and not have a, have a separate thing. So they'll get the instruction at the same time that the students sitting in front of the teacher are getting, they will be on Zoom, so if they have questions, they have the opportunity to, to ask them. So we have to now assess what we have, what our capacity is to do that, uh, in terms of equipment and, and those types of things. But I, I think we've been pretty clear, uh, on the committee that there's, there's, um, and I didn't, first of all, I didn't interpret what you had sent out or what was sent out as, as what you said, looking at doing something regionally, because I think people want to be educated by their schools and the teachers that they know and, and the students that they know. So our, our goal really is to, um, provide students and the teachers with the equipment to do their lesson as if all the kids that were in the class are sitting in front of them. And, uh, when they get to the point where it's independent learning or they're, whatever, that the, the students no longer need to pay attention, but they need to be there for the instruction, and the instructors are expected to instruct, um, during the, during, you know, as, as a part of their lesson, um, that it, that it's not a separate entity. But it, that's gonna, I mean, that's easy to say, right? But it's, uh, in order to do that, what it's going to require some time, and that's why, I mean, I think you guys already, from my perspective, becoming a new, the decision, the joint decision to put three days from last year's workshop days to the beginning of this year is, I think is really smart. When we, when, um, we were talking about ten days, I mean, the discuss, there was no specific discussion with the Kennebec Valley Superintendents. My guess is going to be that some will be looking at, um, two weeks, some may be looking at a whole month. I don't think a month makes sense. I think parents will probably hang us up by our toes if we try to, you know. Those who want their kids back to school want them back yesterday, um, and that, they want them back yesterday, they want them to be safe. That's, you know, that, that's, that's our challenge. So, um, we need to take a look at all those things so we can instruct, uh, with, with, you know, new learning and continuing to move forward with the curriculum and, and expect students to do that at the time that they would be getting it in real time.
I, I think the other thing is just to assure people that, uh, we do have the capability of supplying, or helping to supply the technology to families that need it.
Absolutely.
With computers and Wi-Fi, hotspots, and whatever else is necessary.
Yeah. And again, when we first started talking about the CARES Act fund, funds, we were, you know, we were, we really weren't a hundred percent sure what was going to be, what that money's going to be used for, but that's, that's really the intent. You know, we had to take a look at what are the things, you know, you put together the best plan that you can, um, and, and our, our goal as a committee, committee is to say, school is accessible to a hundred percent of the students. We know a hundred percent of the students aren't coming back, parent choice, that's fine, um, and so how do we, how do we deal with that? And then how, how do we deal with the students who are not here? And, um, and, you know, try to make it work for everybody. And my guess is the, the money that we have will probably be utilized in, um, not just with PPP, because we pretty much have spent, um, we spent about twenty thousand dollars at this point, a little more than twenty thousand, on, on masks, hand sanitizer, wipes, and other protective equipment, flexible, flexible ass and such. And the remaining part of the money is probably enough to take a look at technology and, and getting that stuff in place and giving people the, the training. You know, I certainly can learn, and hopefully, hopefully you all have not had this experience, but I think you'd appreciate it. It's great to give everybody all the equipment they need. If you don't give them the training to go with it.
Right.
It's not worth it. So we, we, I think now, and I bet the principals would say this too, with what the, the teachers had to learn on the go last spring, um, we're in much better shape to be able to give them proper equipment, um, and they, they learned a lot, um, to, in how to deliver instruction remotely last year. So having them in school physically in our schools, um, with some students or as many students as, as parents feel comfortable sending them back, uh, and then having the other students who are in that class, um, attend those classes remotely, uh, at least during the instructional part of the lesson, um, I think is, is kind of where we're at right now. What we're looking to do, and I think that Sue said this, is on, in the meeting on the twelfth, we're, the, the next two weeks, the, the back-to-school committee is going to be looking at putting together guiding principles, all the means they put them in, in guiding principles type of statement, and that's what we're going to ask the school committee to essentially approve.
Ms. Deick?
I just, um, I'm reading sort of through this, the results here that Sue presented, and then looking at some of the, um, answers that, uh, parents put out. I mean, obviously, people are literally all over the place, um, with open immediately and shut down until Christmas vacation. I mean, it, it really is all over the place. And my only, one, uh, one of my concerns as well is, and, and I like what you said about sort of ideally you're teaching your kids in your classroom, whether they're at home on Zoom or in your classroom, and I guess part of my concern would be, you know, any materials that are needed in the classroom, how are we going to get those to students? And I know that each grade or each level has a platform like Google or, you know, and so on, and, and that will certainly help, but there are certain things that can't be sent possibly through Google. So just to think about a plan, is it going to be a once-a-week packet sent home so that, you know, those kids have that packet at home and on Monday, this is their Monday folder or whatever, um, because even though they may have technology at home, they may not have printers. And I, and I guess I'm thinking more towards some of the littles, um, because that is really going to be a hard concept. I mean, how do you do some one-on-one reading with students? Even as, in, in the classroom, you know, and then you've got kids on Zoom just hanging, you know, it's just, it's, it's multi-leveled, um, at best. So, um, I appreciate the survey and some of the answers, but I do think a lot of those answers are pretty telling at some of the attitudes, um, as well.
So I want to address that because I, I think, uh, we were getting a little bit mired down in the committee on that, on the whole, um, and, and Dr. McCall, um, uh, shared some concerns about the wording of some of the questions, and I think Jeff had the best answer for all of that is, these aren't necessarily, um, we're not saying to parents, this, these are your options, pick whatever you want. It really is about what type of, um, education, you know, speak to your question. I mean, we're going to need to, uh, address parents, we're going to need to address staff, we're going to need to address, uh, transportation, we need, so the, the survey, if nothing else, sort of gives us some sense of how broad the, the spectrum is and what essentially what the message needs to be coming out of the, the committee, and then ultimately with the school committee making the decision or the direction, um, we need to get a, you know, if everybody said, you know, masks are ridiculous, we're not using them, and we want our kids back in school immediately, that's probably not in the direction, my sense of the school committee is really willing to go, but I want to know that.
Right.
If, before I go out and address a, a group of parents that, that are going to be saying, why aren't you doing what we say? Uh, why don't, why can't we just do this or do that? And, um, so it, it's, it's not so much about, you know, that's your, pick whatever you want to do, and you get to do it. It's, uh, let us know how you're feeling so we know how to, but the message is deep to me.
I, I think that these surveys, I, I was just saying a different way what I think you just said, show us how much work we have to do.
Exactly.
And, um, and that's a segue to my comment is that I think, um, and Sue and I hashed this out a bit the other day. I, from my point of view and from the folks that have spoken to me, um, parents would like to know something, even that there's a, a committee meeting and these are the things that we are sure of, these are the things that we're still considering, but they would like to know that we are on it, um, and that we're not, we hope to not just dump a whole mess of decision-making on their part as far as childcare, for example, at the last minute. That's not our intent, if, if we can help them. Of course, what COVID does to our region is, is something that we can't necessarily foresee. However, I, I'd like to suggest that perhaps we use the community advertiser, um, or a different way to get to our, our parents and let them know what has been decided and what is going on, uh, right now.
Obviously, this whole, this whole situation makes, I mean, the ideal situation is you would have community forums. You'd say, you know, let's, uh, have some parameters of what we're recommending as a committee. I think that, I, I, this is only my second week working with the committee, they worked for weeks before I came on board, and very impressed with, with, uh, the thoughtfulness and depth of, of thinking for this, for this committee, so, um, and to be able to, to, it, it's a, it's a dilemma, so catch twenty-two. If you have all the answers, then you know of listening to people and, and they have a right to be heard and to express their, you know, their opinions. If you have no idea, then you're, you know, people are wondering, you know, we hire you guys to, to do your job, we ask you to do your job, so it's, there's, there's no great answer there. But ideally, um, and, and maybe we could figure out a way to do that, to, to get, to have, um, community input without, um, you know, creating a, or jeopardizing the, the health and safety of everybody. Because this is not just, I mean, I, I think it goes without saying, but I don't want to do that. You know, the, the, obviously, we have the, the children and the safety of the children, to consider in all of this, but we also have the safety of the adults. You know, we have, we have people that are, um, young people who are teaching, and then you have old people like me that are, you know, that are in the building, and, and so we're actually more susceptible, I don't, you know. I'm certainly, you know, in that position, so we have to think about everybody's, you know, um, all, the entire group of people, not just the students, and certainly isn't just the adults.
Yeah, but my only point is to try to let our community know what we've done so far.
Yep.
That we're working on it.
Yep.
Ms. Shumway?
Uh, I have a couple of things. I don't want to, um, jump the conversation around too much, so I just wanted to start off with, after reading the recommendations that came out of the Department of Education in Maine, um, are we going to, whatever we, we come up with for a plan, are we going to need the okay from them to have in-person or direct instruction? Because I got the sense from the, um, literature that they posted that they were going to be the end-all, be-all. So if we come up with this plan that we're going to reopen our buildings to instruction that, and then they say no, that that's not allowed, that we're not able to. So I just wanted to see how much that was going to weigh in.
So I mean, I talked to Steve Bailey from Maine School Management today, um, we emailed each other, so I didn't speak to him directly, but, um, because I, I was, and I mentioned it at our meeting this morning, that the DOE has been, um, painfully silent in the last month or so, but the, my understanding is that they are expecting to start to provide guidance. But what you said is exactly right, and that's, if you look at what the last- And that's, if you look at what the last message is, the last message is, nobody goes back to school until we say go. So on my last Kennebec Valley superintendent's meeting, people on this, it mirrors what other superintendent regions are saying, is people are, people are hearing from Commissioner Lincoln and others that there will be an expectation that there's some sort of, schools need to be ready to, to open in, in the fall. Now, they're very generic about that, in the fall. So I think that's where some people, like, sort of, well, does in the fall mean the day that was scheduled on our calendar? Does it mean sometime after that or whatever? Nobody really knows what that means. But your, your, the answer, directly answering your question is yes. We can plan all we want. At the end of the day, with the, somebody higher authority than us is going to tell us whether it's okay or not okay. I mean, we, we know for sure. Let's just say hypothetically that, that we're given the green light to plan the type of things that we've been planning. And then we want to have a 10-day delay at the beginning of the school year. So we're going to, nothing's changed in law. We're going to have to get the, the waiver from the state to say those 10 days don't count against our student. I don't think anyone wants to start the year with, we'll start 10 days later and go 10 days later in June. I don't think that, I don't think anybody would be all that excited about that. So there's no doubt that we're going to have, we don't get to make this in isolation. The other thing is, and this is why the Kennebec Valley group at least, I don't know what's happening statewide. There's sort of a sense of, you know, if, if Winthrop decides to go with a 10-day delay, and Monmouth decides to open on day one, and Maranac Hook opens on day one, if Gasc opens on day one, you know, then I, I think people will, you know, that will, that will not bode well.
Well, then what happens with Kansai?
Again, that's another question that's being asked on, on the, on the same site. The, the director from Kansai, I don't know what his name is, but he's supposed to join us. We meet tomorrow, he's supposed to join us tomorrow.
Okay, I have more.
This is a follow-up to your question, though. We had to be approved when we changed our calendar this past year. And all it took was a copy of the, the minutes of our meeting. That's, that's all it ended up being, all that big deal that we had to be approved. So I don't know if it'll be any more stringent than that or not.
Okay, the other major, major point that I have in terms of reopening our, our buildings, I'm very aware of the fact that Winthrop has had one, we're in the one to five category of cases. And that in Kennebec County, our cases are low. Very aware of our single digits that were, you know, cases daily in Maine now. But with that being said, I don't think that we can operate on the assumption that, that that's, oh, virus isn't in Maine, virus isn't in our area, and so, no, we don't need to social distance, we don't need to wear masks, so on and so forth. But with that being said, everything that I've read about infection is exposure to the virus and the time in which you're exposed to that. So wearing a non-N95 mask in an enclosed space for the amount of hours in a school day is going to exponentially increase exposure and infection rates. And so for me, ventilation in our school buildings and in our classrooms is the utmost of importance to me. And Jenny and I had talked a little bit about this, that in the fall, sure, we could buy fans for every classroom, open up the windows a crack for those buildings that their windows only open a crack, and try to get air circulating in. But what happens in the winter when that's not possible anymore? Because I don't think that our ventilation systems are at the level necessary to pull out the amount of air needed to make sure that our, our staff, students, and teachers are safe. So I think that that needs to be looked at and addressed very carefully. And I'm, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but that is definitely something that I would need the committee or a subcommittee to, to look at and answer for me. So that's one.
You want to address that? You want Jeff to address that, because he's...
Is he, is he itching to address that?
Yep.
Just relax.
I can, a little bit. So in the, in the elementary school, we have unit ventilators. So that regulates the fresh air coming in as well as the exhaust going out. I had our technician from Siemens here last week or the week before. And so she has readjusted all of, all of those unit ventilators to ensure that we're getting the proper exchange of air in those rooms. In the old high school, it's an exhaust system. So each room has an exhaust, and there's a fan up on the roof that removes the air. And as a matter of fact, today, I bought 25 window fans to go in each one of the windows there to bring in fresh air to utilize that exhaust. Siemens will be back, and probably the conversation will come up with the superintendent as well as they look at the HVAC system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, I really appreciate it, because it's been a major concern. It's almost been the elephant in the room since we had the engineering study that said the old high school upstairs has like almost no ventilation up there. So...
It has exhausts. I think there's at least six exhaust fans on the roof across the building. So each room is connected into an exhaust fan. There's four rooms that go with each fan. And so in the process of cleaning, we've made sure that all of those exhaust vents, the furniture is cleaned away. I used to keep after teachers a little bit. Kim's looking away. You have a foul cap in the middle of your room.
I know.
So we've, we've cleaned all of those, the furniture and stuff away so that we have, from the lady from Siemens that was here, she said two foot clearance on all sides from those vents. So, so we're taking care of that piece of it so we can make sure we're getting a maximum utilization out of that exhaust system. And her recommendation in terms of a, a short-term solution was to go with the window fans to bring in fresh air. It obviously gets expensive in the wintertime to have a fan running in a window, but it still is a possibility, or even opening the window and maybe not have a fan. We can still bring air in, and we, I think we'll be required to do that until some major type of renovation happens in that building.
Can I follow up on that? First floor, our safety and security study had indicated that first-floor windows, that it was unsafe to leave those open. So how do we counteract that?
Well, we want to, we're going to, the wind, the fans will go in the window, and they'll be blocked similar to the way that if you put an air conditioner in your house, you kind of wouldn't block for each side of the window so that it can't be opened from the outside. We do have an intrusion system that, and motion detectors that's in the building. If somebody comes in, it will get picked up. I think everything we do tends to be a compromise at times, and I'm going to go for air safety versus vandalism in a classroom.
Thank you. Any other questions from the school committee folks? How about comments from the committee people? You're on, if you'd like.
Well, for those of you who don't know, I'm Dr. Jennifer McConnell, and I've done a lot of hard things through the, through this pandemic since March. And this is the hardest, there is no doubt, this is the hardest. I have a spouse who's a principal in another part of the state. So we talk about this a lot, and there's no really good answers. Worry about the teachers, worry about substitutes, worry about bus drivers, worry about kids. And so I think that, you know, what we've realized is that we had no time to plan in March, and this is really a great planning time. We realize that we can't answer every question, like how are we going to beat kids until we get some of the bigger overall guidelines? The DOE and the CDC, yeah, they have mandates and thoughts and guidelines, but they don't really tell us how to, you know, keep kids safe, keep teachers safe. You know, for me, I'm like, wait a minute, I gotta, you know, we gotta know the minute there's a positive in this community, so we know how it's going to affect our schools. So I got this whole other thought process, and you were going to ventilation. I'm like, oh, okay, that's not the question. But you know what I mean, it's, it's, this is huge. And I don't think anybody's going to get it right on the first day. I think that's why that, that extra time to prepare ourselves once, once teachers are back. I think we've realized some of the things that were really hard was to, how do you teach? If I had to guess, out of crystal ball, eventually, everybody will be remote again, at least for a while. But we don't know that, but not in the beginning, which I think will be good for everybody. But getting the teachers back, even if the students are remote, I think is going to help. Then you've got teachers, well, how am I going to get childcare? So we, I mean, we're so, I mean, we are just, these, these meetings are not taken lightly. So I think that, you know, really trying to encourage kids back is really important. Supporting families that don't feel safe having their kids back is really important. And supporting teacher, staff, transportation folks in a way that they feel safe is really going to be our guiding principle. And I think that's what we're, you know, really been able to stay focused on. Learned a lot, now I know about ventilation. But our learning curve is still really steep. So I'm very appreciative of everybody on the committee and the time we're putting together, so...
Thank you, Dr. McConnell. As a committee member, Mr. Led, do you have any further comments?
No, I'm, I'm wiped out.
You're wiped out. I really do miss Fitzgerald.
I think it's been, as Dr. McConnell said, an enlightening educational experience to try to do the right thing for so many parties, knowing we won't please everybody, but doing our level best to protect students and staff. It's a challenge.
Are there any other committee members here that have overlooked? Community members, please state your name, and, because I can't always recognize if you find those masks.
Good, I'm glad you can. Name's Dick Redd. As I understand it, you, you had said that you'd like to put school off another 10 days, two weeks.
Can you speak up for me, because I'm kind of...
You're considering putting school off for another two weeks, 10 days, is that right?
It's considered, yes.
It's a thought that's been thrown out there.
Okay. We've got seven weeks before school starts. The right people can get a lot of things done in, in, in seven weeks. That's a long time. I don't understand why, like the bill, I mean, I, I don't know if you can use volunteers to come out and help Mr. Led put the yellow pig down or whatever, or whatever you can do. But seven weeks to me is a suitable amount of time to get these issues done. You know, these kids have been out of school for a long time. They, they want to go back now, not, not, not two weeks later, not two months later. They want to go back now. I mean, I get around a lot, I see a lot of kids. And, and there's, a lot of kids are struggling socially. And, I mean, seven weeks is, is, is a long time to me. And I think with the right people, I don't know who's on the committee or who's doing what, but come on, seven weeks? And you want, you know, another two weeks? That's... The other, the other comment with Mr. Led, I've worked in these buildings, I graduated from under bicycle Bailey, Joe knows. But I've worked in these buildings, I'm quite familiar with the air exchange systems. And there are all kinds of different alternatives. There are some other alternatives, and I'd love to spend some time talking with you about them. You know, it might be helpful for you to get some air up there. And the old school here, on the side of the walls, you see those green ventilators? That's what those were, those are air exchanges. They used to draw the air from outside, go through the heater, pour it in the classroom. And that's, that's how we got the air. Basically, I, I guess, I know you have transportation issues and, and socializing issues, and, but to me, seven weeks is a long time.
The other, the other issue, and, you know, typically, we listen to the comments and then we'll ponder all those. And typically, we don't respond. But Dick, because it's you.
Right.
The, the other point I think that folks are making is that our teachers need to be trained on how to use whatever software is decided that we're going to use. And they also need, none of them are experts at doing distance learning. And that's a whole different ballgame about how to engage and transmit education in a learnable fashion. That's a whole different skill level. So that's part, that's part of the answer. I'm not saying it can or can't be done in the five days of workshop that we have allotted in, allotted in our schedule. I'm just saying that that's another point that we're trying to consider.
Well, you know, like I say, we have seven more weeks. And I can't believe with the, with the, the teachers have been off for quite a while. I, I don't, I don't believe that it wasn't, wouldn't be one teacher that's willing to come in early and, and get this training done so we can open on time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? For a minute, I thought that you raised your hand.
No other thoughts? Thank you.
Can I, I have more thoughts.
Oh, I'm so sorry!
I didn't want to take away from the community's thoughts. So when Dr. McConnell was talking, I, it reminded me of something I wanted to bring up. It seems like the school committee is going to need to pass a whole slew of policies around reporting, et cetera. So if that's something that we could get working on for that next policy meeting, that, that might be one little...
What policies?
It seemed like in the CDC recommendations, it talked about having guidelines for staying home, developing plans for when students and staff need to be home. I think that some of the...
A policy if we have someone tested positive, you know, we have two to five days is the recommendation by CDC, but what are we going to do? So that we have those policies that we can alert the parents right now, well, as soon as we get the policies passed, so that if we have a situation arise in one of our buildings, the, the parents are going to know what's going to happen. If we, if we announce, if you go over the emergency, whatever, what's it called?
Alert.
The alert, and say, you know, unfortunately, we've had a student tested positive, they've been in our building for several days, blah, 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 blah. And because of that, we're going to enact a policy that you've all read and are familiar with, and we will be out of school for two to five days. Please stay close to our communications. That we will be communicating with you as often as we can and keeping you up to date, because they have all of this childcare stuff that they need to deal with. So it's all of those kinds of policies, right?
So, and, and this may just be semantics. I don't think about that in terms of policies. That's, I think there's some principles in, I guess that's what we meant as committee about guiding, guiding principles, so to draft all of that. I think it's, I don't know, when I think about policies, it's like, me, I certainly hope, I think we all hope, that, that the whole, the effects of COVID-19 are not going to last years. And again, it may just be semantics. I agree, we need to do all those things. I'm not, you know, we call them policies, we call them procedures, and we call them decisions of the board, protocol. I mean, I don't know what the right word is, I'm not sure that I would have used, I would use policies, but it sounds like CDC, right?
Yeah, well, they did talk about develop policies on returning to school, COVID procedures, et cetera. If we, and I have said this before, when we, I think it was at our last meeting, because Dr. McConnell, we were there, and I was saying that whatever it is that we do, whatever the procedures or the guiding principles that we put in place, that they need to be followed. Because you're, people are trusting that that's the environment that they're sending their students to, that they're working in. And so... And so that if, in order for that to happen, it needs to be an official policy, then I'd rather it be an official policy.
Yeah. Um, I, I couldn't agree more. And, and to me, as your superintendent, um, who's gonna be responsible for making sure everything that you decide is followed, uh, I don't want it to be left up to my judgment. Um, I want it to be pretty clear. Uh, this is what, you know, I always said, I'm happy to be the, the captain of the ship, but I, those don't ask me to chart the course at the same time, so, um, I, like I said, I think it's, it's somewhat semantics, I think we need to make sure we cover everything, whether we call it policy, we call it practice, we call it an interim plan, we call it guiding prin, I don't, whatever, we do need to, I'm, we, I want to have all of those, uh, we talked about that just today, you know, don't have those eyes and cross those t's.
And then I'm just gonna repeat myself probably for the third or fourth time. I, I don't, I don't, everything I've read, the CDC communication is one of the things, one of the vitamins is paramount. I don't think in this situation, we can communicate too much with our parents. Whether it's for them to be able to get their head around that, yes, we are gonna require masks for the students, but then to also let them know what's going on, what will go on if, if, if various things happen.
Yep.
Um, I, I would, none of us like surprises, and, um, the more that we can communicate with our parents, I think the smoother everything will run.
Well, I, I think, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I think we, it's, um, right now is a bit of a tough spot, because I don't think, I, I don't feel like, I don't feel comfortable communicating to the public about what we're gonna do, 'cause it's, the committee realizes that we're a, we're making recommendations, we're not making decisions. This is the decision-making body. So I would be happy to communicate, uh, on a regular basis with the, with the community, but I think we need to be really clear about what those messages are.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Dr. McConnell?
Um, and just in terms of sort of procedure, that was gonna be my question. So if we, if we're, we've sort of come up with two recommendations so far, which are that, um, all staff needs to be in the building, irregardless of where students are learning from. And that if students, um, and anyone in the building needs to have a mask, be masked at all times unless they're able to, um, six foot distance, and, um, then they can take a mask break as one of the frame that we were, way we reframed it today, to try to, again, make it a mandate, but you can have a break. So, so we made that recommendation, we bring it back here, I mean, is it, my concern is the DOE is gonna give more guidelines sometime between August 1st and mid-August.
Yeah.
And, and that also becomes a question of attending what they say, you know, we may only then have ten days to implement what they're saying we have to do. So how, how do you balance that? Or do you think that it's good enough, or, or early, you know, soon enough? 'Cause I agree with, people need to know. Do we just let them know we're working on a plan? Masks are gonna be involved, and we want your kids and, and all the staff safe.
I think part of the communication is what I said, uh, the last meeting that you attended, is that we have to remain nimble, um, depending on what goes on in our state and what comes down from higher above us. And so any communication that we give to the community will have that, will that, have that asterisk in the small print, any of this can change. And we all have to be really flexible and adjust to the times.
And we may have, it may have, I'm sorry, Joe's been waiting to jump in.
Well, it kinda goes along with what you're saying, though, but, the two, two things. It was obvious to me from reading the last few days, but also from listening to main public radio, that there are many people out there saying that you really can't wear that mask all day, that this might not be the best thing for kids to wear a mask all day. Uh, and some of them are coming from school systems.
Children's no data, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to interrupt, it's coming out of Orange County, California. There is no research, no data, pull the white paper and read the resources, I, I, there is no data. There is good data that if somebody's walking around in our school with a virus and they have a mask on, that we are not gonna become an epicenter.
Right.
Guaranteed. There is no danger in wearing a mask 24/7.
Well, part of it, but part of it was the type of mask, okay? That some of the masks that we wear are suffocating more than they are letting us breathe at the same time we're wearing it. That, that's where I was trying to get at, was this whole spectrum of people talking about masks, but anyway, I, I think you're gonna have more of it. But my second point is this...
Can I, can I just address that, you know?
I'm not gonna fight masks or not masks, I'm just saying that...
No, we've already made that decision, that's the only thing I was gonna say, that we, we, we pretty much all agreed that we were about follow CDC guidelines, so...
Then I think we're gonna have to get the standard mask and give it out to everybody.
We're doing that.
That's the big thing that we need.
We, we've purchased thousands of disposable masks.
Okay. All right.
Okay, second thing.
My second thing is that since you're gonna be talking to your, um, fellow superintendents, I really think it's worthwhile to talk to them about what are you going to do prior to school with your workshop days?
Yep.
What are you gonna teach on those days? How are you gonna do it? Because I do think it's a legitimate thing about saying, well, I'd like to have a real good reason if I was gonna delay the opening of school. Even to the point, could we go and add a couple more workshop days even earlier, if that's what we need? And, uh, but I think it'd be interesting to see what the other people are doing, and maybe collaboratively, you can put together something that will work for everybody.
I think for me, the, and I'm sorry, uh, the, as we were talking, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now, maybe Teresa or some of the other committee members might remember, but it seems like every time you come up with something, there's, there's a, there's more to it, the devil's in the details. And that whole notion of, it, it's not, honestly, Mr. Dorrit, it's not about, um, getting the signage, or the, the, you know, the tape on the floor, or any of that type of stuff, that can be done now, it can be done, it, it should be done now. But it really is about, A, getting the, getting agreement to, to get the staff back in. We can't tell them to come back, we can't even legitimately ask them to volunteer to come back, although I think a number of, what a number of them have, um, already spending a lot of time. But it really is about sort of planning that whole sense of what doesn't, 'cause we didn't get to do that before. It was, you know, we're, we're, um, you know, we were in school, and then school was done, and then we're remote learning, and, and, you know, and at first, it was just review, 'cause we didn't know if it was gonna be, you know, two weeks, uh, five day, whatever. Um, I think we're, we can be pretty comfortable in saying that, um, this is not going away in the next month or two. Um, so we're gonna be doing some sort of, and this is what we keep talking about, a hybrid model, and to, to give the teachers the time to properly prepare is, is probably more than three days. I don't know, is two weeks too much? Is it one week? I mean, I, I don't know what the right number is. I know it's not a month, I've already sort of said that. Um, and as I said, I think we'd be strung up by our toes. But I think it really is about, um, giving them an insight, this is what we need, provide that information, provide the training, um, and look at the, look at the details for what needs to happen. And I'm not even saying, I mean, this is just an idea that's being discussed, the teachers might say, you know what? I don't want that, maybe, you know, I mean, and I'm thinking, I said I wasn't gonna do this, went to it anyway, maybe the answer is, um, we open on day one with everybody who wants to come back, and we don't start remote for a period of time. We don't do remote for two or three weeks, um, while we get people prepared and, and do whatever. I mean, I, I don't know, that's just another, there's a lot of possibilities, I mean, I, I won't go through all the possibilities. Mr. Campbell and I were talking about something that happened when, when he was a, a youth, just a couple days ago, um, it had happened, you know, and, so there's lots of creative things out there, and, but it really, I think whatever plan is out there, if we just focus on the number one thing that we're, I'm not willing to accept as a superintendent, is I'm not going to risk anybody's safety. I'm not gonna put anybody, um, in any, any bit of a risky, any more of a risky situation than the parents are willing to take.
And we're still gonna educate their children?
Best we can.
Best we can. Just we can.
I just have one more thing.
Go.
Uh, the subcommittees, when are they starting?
We're gonna talk about that next week. We're gonna stop the transportation, and then we're gonna talk about, um, the subcommittees, and, you know, that's, and, and I think Sue listed some of those, I don't have that paper in front of me now, but, you know, it's all of the, I mean, we have to, something as simple as feeding the kids, I shouldn't say simple, something as, it's not simple, but something as, you know, like, oh my God, what are we gonna do about that? We're not gonna send them off to the cafeteria.
Not with them to their classrooms and...
Yep, so whatever. Transportation is a huge issue right now. Substitutes, we've had trouble getting substitutes before, what are the chances we're gonna get more substitutes now? You know, not very good, so...
Um, when we made the announcement that all students are going to be, I mean, all, all teachers and staff are expected to be in the buildings regardless of where students are learning? If, um, if students are in the building learning, are we going to have a number of staff members that are not going to be returning?
Uh, according to the staff survey, uh, there's only two. Now, when the reality, when the, you know, the proverbial poop hits the fan, um, and people get in there and, you know, and, and you never, you don't know, people, and you never know what's gonna happen. People could get sick, have nothing to do with COVID-19, but then that's, it triggers a sense of, oh my God, um, now we're putting ourselves at, at great risk, and, and, you know, so we don't know. Uh, you know, Jenny said the word that I keep using, or we're gonna, whatever we put together for a plan, we know it's not gonna be perfect, and we know it's gonna have to change. So we, we need to let our parents know that we're gonna make the best educated decision we can, and it may be the right decision today, and it changes tomorrow. Hopefully not that quickly, but something on. And one of the things that, that I keep forgetting to say, the communication, there's direct communication, and then there's, there's somewhat indirect communication. We had the opportunity, because of our alert system, to communicate with our parents. We could theoretically communicate with them every single day. Uh, and the community would, you know, get the advertiser and those types of things, but it's, it is gonna be more of a challenge to try and communicate with the, the people who don't have children in our school. And it's important for us to continue to communicate with all of them, but we'll, you know, the, our parents and our, and our, our staff, we can communicate daily if we had to.
Thank you. Um, for the, uh, Ms. Fitzgerald?
Sorry, I was just gonna ask if you were gonna check with the Zoom.
Right now.
Okay, perfect.
For the people that are on Zoom, um, if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question, this is your time to do that. You can do it a couple of ways. You can raise your hand if you find that little, um, what's the word I'm looking for here? Icon down the bottom, usually mine is the right-hand side. Or you can either applaud or raise a hand, or you can actually type in a comment, say, I have a question, and then go ahead and type your question, and Mr. Delau will probably read it for me.
Can you see those two?
So now's your time. Please indicate. Okay, now's the time.
Are you muted?
Do you see anything, Mr. Delau?
Uh-huh.
Okay, seeing nothing, uh, is there something there? Oh, I, I saw some, thank you. I was so excited. Uh, seeing nothing, I'll close then the, the public comment. And, um, school committee comments?
We have one.
Oh. We'll hold here. Are you typing in your question, Mr. Delau?
Yes, so I can read that out.
That's what it looked like.
No, Mike, Mike Griswold said yes, so I asked him to go ahead.
Oh, okay.
But I do not say questions.
Maybe he's just a slow typer. He can, he can unmute.
Everybody unmute themselves now, too.
Yeah. Maybe he pushed the button by mistake.
Can, can anybody hear me?
Oh, there you go, Mr. Griswold, go ahead.
So, so, I, I'm sorry, I was actually just moving in from the other room, and so, uh, I had a question as it related to the requirement for all staff to be in school regardless of where, going to be doing remote learning or blended or, um, so to kind of give it a context, the question is, I have my three kiddos, um, I have my daughter Lydia in first grade, um, my son Brayden, who's gonna be in pre-K this fall, and then my daughter Dorothy, who's 14 months. Brayden and Dorothy will be situated in daycare, uh, so we're, we're good there. As far as our daughter Lydia, I'm a little concerned around what the options might be for staff who have their spouse who also works, that if, if, if I'm needing care for my, my eldest child, that will be an additional expense to me. Uh, so I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out for our planning what the feeling is from the, the board around what options there might be for teachers who still have to provide care for their school-aged child.
So are you asking, are we going to provide daycare?
No, but this, what, what options are there be for staff, I suppose, to consider daycare if they would otherwise not need it? So Lydia and I are on the same schedule for being at the grade school, so that really is like a, anywhere, I guess, from a $500 to $700 expense were to be in daycare. Uh, so since she's not, that might be an accrued expense for us. Uh, so I just wanted to ask if there was any dialogue around, if there will be a flexibility for teachers, we are asked to be in the school, and we are teaching remotely for our students.
I think we can refer that question, um, to the committee, and they can take it up at their next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Griswold.
Thank you.
So, you have that?
I think, I think so. He's essentially asking that if students are remote and he needs to be in the building, how is he going to handle his elementary-age student who now is remote and no longer in the building? So is there flexibility around him perhaps teaching from home if his, his elementary-age child is at home?
Sure, that he can provide daycare for his child. Yeah. It looks like there might be 13 people in that same situation according to the staff survey. Okay, do you see anything else coming up?
If we can enter, let's see if anybody else has any.
Okay, thank you. I wonder if he had any options to suggest. Uh, Dr. McConnell?
Um, I've, uh, heard of other school districts looking at trying to put together daycare for teachers, um, just, and I know, uh, one of my neighbors slash acquaintances has the same concern, so I know, yeah, there's others. So there has been talk of that, could we put together, instead of kids' club, could we have a little opportunity for teachers, kids to be looked at, or at least part of the day while they were taking on their teaching responsibilities?
Well, we do for young children, uh, we have a daycare down here for our teachers. Uh, it's been full with a waiting list for a while.
But just to bring up a point, that the expectation is, is that these students, if they go remote, that they're supposed to be learning during that timeframe.
Right.
So going to a daycare situation is not going to be adequate enough, not having to ask somebody there who's going to be assisting in instruction. I know that when this first started in the, in Manchester, Micah Pitt, which also provides like an after-school type activity club for students in the area, that they took on a remote instruction type role, that students would go there with the expectation that they were going to get their work done. So I think that, um, if that is a model, then there should be, in the subcommittee, that could be an area of exploration, and perhaps there's someone in the community that would be willing to take that on.
So I, I know it's, it's probably less risk, but it, it feels a little bit awkward to me, and that's probably why we should let the committee beat this around a little bit more, or consider this more, but if they, if they're going to be in a daycare situation, is that significantly more risky, or less risky than being in school? Now, if they're younger, you know, if they're, but that, that, I think that takes on a whole other, different issue, because, you know, while I'd like to certainly try to make accommodations for our staff, our teaching staff, um, I think anybody who has any job anywhere is, is, um, is dealing with the same issue. The gentleman over there.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Dennis Dorrit.
You were talking about kids learning remotely all the time. Kids go to daycare, they're not gonna be able to learn remotely at daycare.
In daycare, right.
I have two kids in school, three in daycare, the daycare provider's not gonna, they're not all in the same class, you can't, that's not even possible. So how, we, you know, both work full-time, what are we supposed to do? Quit our jobs, let kids get education? And the only answer is get the kids back in school. Figure out how to do it safely. That is the only answer. The other thing I brought up is sports. Are we even gonna have fall sports?
Well, we don't have to leave it up to the NPA, but the NPA is going to meet soon, and they will be making some recommendations. Mr. Stoneton will bring those recommendations to the school committee, maybe even as soon as that meeting, in two weeks.
He's on this committee.
I just feel like sports, and maybe it's selfish of me because my kids are in grade school, so they don't play on middle school and high school sports, but that's one big risky thing, where kids are physically touching each other, and you think of football, they're traveling from schools to schools, from counties to county. It's not even possible to have sports, and if it jeopardizes education, get rid of sports, you know, for this year anyways, you know? I know some people that will make pretty upset, but I think education, I think education's much more important than sports, you know, for one year, I think we can give it up, you know?
I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, Joel, I mean, Joel has had that conversation with the committee quite good, and, you know, he's unfortunately not able to be here tonight. Actually, I think he wouldn't mind if I said he's not here tonight because he's celebrating the birth of his grandson. So I would much rather have him be there, I know it's important, but I would just, all I can say to you is he's on top of that, and from his perspective with the athletic director, if we can't deliver those types of things safely, I think he, it's not like he's speaking for the entire state, I think his sense is, I know the NPA at one point was looking at possibly flipping to, like, I mean, maybe we could do golf, because golf, you know, we can social distance, maybe we could do tennis, I don't know, I shouldn't even go on that far. There may be some things, maybe to flip some sports around and have something in the fall and be able to do something else later, I don't know. But I think, I can't speak for the whole committee, I can speak for me because I know it's hard to believe now, but I was a former athlete, and, but I, I would agree with your sentiment, that if we have to not have it for a year, God, we've done it with all professionals, four, now for what? Three, four months?
And we're all so.
Come back next week, man.
I have another question here, this is from Mrs. Griswold. The daycare availability is so scarce in our area, and many are further limiting their capacity within a remote learning module. How can we support, anyway, how can we support parents with jobs and no childcare? That's a tough one, that's a tough one for our whole country. So, Mrs. Griswold, all I can tell you is that, that the committee will be discussing that, but I have to say from a personal point of view that it's a nationwide problem that we're having right now. But I don't mean to cop out, I know that our committee will discuss it and see if there is anything that we can do to help, especially our staff. Thank you. Any others? Mike, we ought to have a little tutorial here, so. And then, absolutely, and I appreciate any discussion within this. So thank you for your comments, Griswold. Okay, I think I'll declare public comment closed. School committee comments? Ms. Dyke?
I really don't.
You have the questions, what?
I know, I was saying, I really don't have anything. I just, I appreciate the work that's going in to the committee, and I appreciate the concerns in the town, I just, in reading through a lot of those comments, it does flare up a lot of concerns, and both as an educator, you know, what's going through my mind and what we're asked to do, I felt like, you know, in March, we were sort of put out on an island and figure it out, and it's still going through all of our minds, and they're gonna dump me in the same situation possibly in the fall, and there's still gonna be growing pains, so people need to remember that. This is still new for staff and students, even though we tried it out in the spring, but the expectations were also different, as expectations will be different in the fall, but it's still gonna have some growing pains, so.
Mr. Patac?
I'm very hopeful that when you get around to subcommittees, and bring people to that, that you'll broaden the participation by putting more community members and putting some students on those subcommittees. I think that's one of the advantages that you have at this point, is to expand the participation and keep the ideas going and that type of thing, but I'm personally very pleased with what Sue and the committee has done. I think they just have really worked hard, and they're waiting for things, just like my question on the mask, you know, that's all over the place, and I know it's all over the place, but my worry is still the same, that I wanna make sure that it can, yeah, can get through all of this.
Ms. Stoneton?
Thanks, thank you. Yeah, just two things. Thanks to everyone for approving our budget, that is greatly appreciated, and, you know, honestly, if we were still having to go back to the, go back to the drawing board with that, that would be very stressful right now. So I'm glad, very grateful that we're able to focus on, talk the discussion about reopening the buildings and the possibilities around that. And with that being said, the committee, you guys have taken on a momentous task, and you're being very thoughtful and thorough, and I appreciate that. And I do understand that by making declarations of staff returning to the building regardless of where students are learning from, that that just creates a whole nother myriad of concerns and questions, and even saying that students will be back in the building with masks and social distancing, and all of the concerns that that brings up, all of the different groups that are educated within our buildings and their ability to wear masks, to wash hands, et cetera. So I, I know that your work is not done, and that there's so much left to do. I'm grateful that you are going to create those subcommittees, because I think that that will allow some of the nitty-gritty to be focused on by experts in the community and within the school buildings, so, thank you.
Ms. Bell?
I don't think I have anything to add to all that, that was pretty good.
Just to build on everything, I think some of the decision-making that this committee is doing has been gut-wrenching. We find ourselves actually trying to invent the wheel. We try to talk with lots of other people and see how they've chosen to invent the wheel, but it's pretty difficult. I think the one, one of the things that you, everyone can be quite sure of is that every member of that committee and every member of your school committee has the best interests and safety and health, as well as the academics, in mind for all of our students and all of our staff, as well as our community. And I would just plead with all of our students, staff, and all of our community members to realize that cooperation is a really cool word, and it's one of five words that we have at least at the high school. Is that, that's a school system-wide. We need to cooperate. Please understand that we are not going to please everyone, it's just not going to happen, but even if you find yourself having to comply with something that you don't totally agree with, we would really appreciate your cooperation. And we would appreciate any helpful comments, any actual suggestions that you, that you think would fix a problem. We would really very greatly appreciate some of those. And your school committee people are ready to hear those, as well as your superintendent and principals. So thank you very much to the committee for all they've done. Poor Sue, I know she's heard me rant and rave now for, for a while, she's asked me, I don't think she'll do it again, but she asked me, please, please, rave me over the calls, ask me every question that you think might happen, and I don't think she'll ask me that again, but. I seem to have no difficulty doing that, but, so, but thank you all very much, and nice presentation, thank you, folks. Sue, this is all yours, this next part, this Roman numeral nine.
I move to adjourn.
Second. A discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.